To come forward and lead us in a prayer and the pledge. There is no student showcase tonight, so, thank you, sir.
Thank you. This is also the first Thursday of May, which for our nation is the National Day of Prayer. And so all over the nation, churches have been opened and in different places, prayer meetings have been held in order to call out to the God of hope. That's the theme, and so I'd like to pray in that way. Would you join me in prayer? Father God, we come to you and we are grateful for the hope that you give us. And hope, that is a hope that will not disappoint, your word says. It's an assured hope, it's a confident hope, not a wishful one. And it is all because of your great love for us. And you demonstrated that love in that you gave us Jesus Christ, who died for us even while we were yet sinners, and he rose again from the dead. And he's alive now at your right hand and coming again. And we are, Lord, looking forward to that when everything is made right, when every tear is dried and all the wrongs are, Lord, they're repaired, they're redeemed. And all creation, you said, is groaning for that day. And we say, even so, come, Lord Jesus. Thank you for this great nation that you've given us to live in and the freedom that we enjoy and the reasons that we have this freedom. For the military that protect us on a regular basis, for those around even locally who are in law enforcement, who are risking themselves in order that we might be safe and secure. God, thank you for them. Thank you for our leaders. God, we pray that you would continue to give us godly leaders that lead in integrity and with character, and God uphold your standard. And Father, I thank you that you have given us those. And God, where there are those who are ungodly and will not uphold your standard, I pray you remove them from this nation, from office. I pray, God, for our state. Thank you for the officials here who lead us, and I pray the same. And God, for this local, this community we live in, this county that God you've given us, that is so special and dear to our hearts. And we pray your protection over it. And that, God, too, you give us godly leaders. Thank you for the leaders you've given us and even the ones who are here tonight. Bless them, Lord. And, Lord, thank you so much for eternal life, that you've promised us if we put our trust and faith in Jesus Christ. You said, "For by grace are we saved, through faith, and that not of ourselves." It is the gift of God. It is not of works, lest anyone should boast. And then, Lord, I want to pray for these parents. So many here who are, they're here tonight for recognitions and, Lord, they're raising their children. God, to be good citizens. And, Lord, I pray, too, that their children grow up to know you, to follow you all the days of their life and to do your will. And, God, Lord, there's nothing better, nothing more important than doing what you desire. Thank you in Jesus' name. Amen. Would you join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call to order the board meeting for May 1st, 2025. Welcome, citizens of Clay County. I want to take the opportunity to thank you for taking the time out of your busy schedule to attend tonight's school board meeting. The meeting is our opportunity as your elected representatives to collaborate openly and make decisions that will decide the future direction of our public schools and the education of our children here in Clay County. If you wish to address the board on an agenda item, there will be an opportunity to speak for three minutes. Please fill out a card located at the side entry door indicating the specific item number or topic you wish to speak about and turn it in promptly to one of our officers. If you have items that you would like to present to the school board or superintendent, please hand them to an officer who will distribute them accordingly. Speakers who wish to address specific agenda items will be heard following the recognition and awards portion of the meeting. Speakers wishing to address non-agenda items will be heard following the adoption of the consent agenda. No additional cards will be accepted once the board moves to the public comments section under presentations after the audience, or from the audience, sorry. Your participation is welcomed and appreciated. First up, we have recognitions and awards. To recognize winners of the 2025 Math Field Day, we have Ms. April Shipley, Elementary Math Curriculum Coach.
And Ms. Govinda.
Good evening. My name's Govinda Pour and I am the Elementary Math Specialist. I'm here alongside my phenomenal elementary math coach and Math Field Day Coordinator, April Shipley, alongside my two other math coaches, Mary Jane Edgar and Cheryl Radcliffe. We're here to recognize some outstanding students who participated in Elementary Math Field Day. Thank you, Mr. Brodsky, and our school board members for allowing us to be here tonight. Thank you for our school board members who joined us on our Math Field Day event. We also want to recognize our teachers, our staff, and our coaches, and the many volunteers who served at Elementary Math Field Day. Elementary Math Field Day is an event that takes place every April. Teams in 4th, 5th, and 6th grade from each of our 28 elementary schools compete in four events: the quiz, the huddle, word problems, and the relay. We also have the Muggins Tournament that takes place at Math Field Day as well. This is run by Robin Bossinger. We're gathered here today to recognize our first, second, and third place teams as well as our Muggin winners. So, we wanted to play along and we decided we'd like you guys to do a little bit of math with us. Who's down for some math tonight? Okay. I see some grimaces, just a few smiles, though. Let's take a look at a typical question that students could see in one of our events, the relay event. Okay, give me a hand up when you've got it solved. Okay, I see some of our math coaches, they've got it. So we'll revisit this at the end, we'll give you a few minutes to solve it. We are going to start today by announcing our Muggins Tournament winner. So our winner for high score is actually Simone Bard from Keystone Heights Elementary School and her coach, Mr. Seneca. They actually weren't able to join us tonight, but we're going to make sure their award gets to Keystone Heights Elementary School. There is Simone. And so our next winner that we would like to recognize is our Muggins Tournament overall winner, Elijah Ransom from Lakeside Elementary School. Elijah, come on out. And Elijah's coach is Ms. Lee. Ms. Lee, if you'll come on up. Thank you, Elijah. You can go to your family. Next, we're going to recognize our 4th grade winners. We're going to start with 3rd place, 2nd place, and then 1st place. So our 3rd grade, or, excuse me, our 4th grade 3rd place winner is Lake Asbury Elementary. Come on out, Lake Asbury. Lake Asbury Elementary 4th grade coach is Ms. Sirda. Ms. Sirda, will you come on up? Congratulations, Lake Asbury. Our 2nd place winner in 4th grade is Patterson Elementary School. Patterson, come on out. Patterson's 4th grade coach is Ms. Steinforth. And our 1st place winner. Congratulations, Patterson. And our 1st grade winner for 4th, or for our 1st place winner for 4th grade is Orange Park Elementary. Come on out. The 4th grade coach was Ms. Doty. Ms. Doty, come on up and join your team. Great job, Orange Park Elementary. Now, we're going to move to our 5th grade teams and we'll recognize 3rd place, 2nd place, and then 1st place. So for our 5th grade teams, our 3rd place for 5th grade, we have Fleming Island Elementary. Fleming Island Elementary's coaches are Ms. Bernard, Ms. Glidden, and Ms. Hale. Great job, Fleming Island Elementary. In 5th grade, we had a two-way tie for our 2nd place position. So the first team that we're going to call out is Shadow Lawn Elementary. And Shadow Lawn Elementary's coach is Ms. McAlroy. Great job, Shadow Lawn. Our other 5th grade 2nd place winner was Patterson Elementary. Come on out, Patterson. Ms. Manzi is their coach. Great job. Our 5th grade 1st place winner was Orange Park Elementary. The Orange Park Elementary 5th grade coach is Ms. White. Great job, Orange Park. Moving on to our 6th grade winners, in 3rd place, we have Lake Asbury Elementary. Lake Asbury Elementary's 6th grade coaches are Ms. Mia and Ms. Kearney. Thank you, Lake Asbury Elementary. Our 2nd place winner for 6th grade was Patterson Elementary. Come on out, Patterson. And Patterson Elementary's 6th grade coaches, Ms. Cooksey. Great job, Patterson. And finally, our 1st place winner for 6th grade actually couldn't be here today because they all had their 6th grade field trip, but we would like to recognize 6th grade 1st place winner, Orange Park Elementary. Their coach is Mr. Harris, and Dr. Herndon is accepting on their behalf. Thank you, Dr. Herndon. Okay. Thank you, Orange Park Elementary. Planning this event begins in September and continues weeks after the event. We are so grateful for all of the helping hands that made this event come together. I would personally like to take a moment to recognize our Math Field Day Coordinator, April Shipley. Although this is a team effort, this day would not happen without the leadership of April taking on coordinator. So come on up, April. Okay, so let's revisit our math problem. Uh-oh. And the answer is 610. We look forward to seeing you all at Math Field Day 2026. Thank you. All right, next up, we have recognition of the 2024-2025 Superintendent Student Advisory Council members. Ms. Kelly Watt, Chief of Staff.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started. So, my name is Kelly Watt and I am Chief of Staff for Superintendent David Brodsky. And I am so excited to be here tonight to recognize the service of our student, Superintendent Student Advisory Council. So I'm going to go ahead and ask them to come on in. And there's a lot, come on, uh, come on all in. And Lindsay, just stand up here next to me, and the rest of y'all can come on up here in a line. It's like a clown car, they just keep coming. There's a lot. And we're going to have to squeeze tight. We may have to do a second row. Um, mhm. We'll just do that and kind of curve around. They just keep, yeah. When you tell them to show up, they show up. That's what kind of kids these are. Keep, keep getting, yep, yep. We're going to just kind of come on in here just a little bit tighter. All right, so this is a phenomenal group of students. And I'm just going to start off by saying that if you see the name Superintendent Student Advisory Council, you may wonder what that is. And so this is an organization made up of students who have to apply to be on the council, and they meet regularly with the superintendent to provide a direct line of communication with the superintendent, to share their perspectives, to share their experiences, and to use their voice to help affect change in our district. Many of these students have served on the council for more than one year. Raise your hand if you've been on it for more than one year. Okay. And raise your hand if this was your first year. All right, so we always get a great variety of voices. With us tonight, joining us tonight is our Chair of the Superintendent Student Advisory Council, Lindsay Gillis. And she's going to be here to share just a little bit about what they have done and update the community on all their work. Lindsay Gillis.
Good evening. My name is Lindsay Gillis and I am the Chair of the Superintendent Student Advisory Council as well as a senior at Fleming Island High School. This is my 3rd year on the council, and I am here tonight to represent all of these lovely people and all of their ideas that we shared throughout the year. So, go ahead and get started. Okay, so what is the Superintendent Student Advisory Council? I know Mrs. Watt briefly just touched on this, but the Superintendent Student Advisory Council is a group of students in secondary schools across the county that meet every month to discuss issues that directly impact the student body. Our primary goal is to contribute ideas to staff and the county office and the Superintendent of Clay County District Schools, Mr. David Brodsky, to ultimately result in higher levels of student success, safety, and after-high-school readiness. So a little bit of background on our SSAC members. I get to see these people once a month and I have loved getting to know each one individually. But a big overview of the advisory council, we have students ranging from 7th to 12th grade. We have two junior high schools represented and seven high schools represented. And approximately 100% of us are involved in honors courses, dual enrollment, AP, ASIB, one of those higher-level programs. 42% are student athletes, 30% are involved in fine arts, and 56% are involved in seven or more extracurricular activities. So what do our meetings look like? Our council meets once a month in this room at Fleming Island High School. We have a conversation guided by myself and our Vice Chair, Taylor White, introducing a topic with a representative from the county office. Once we leave the meeting, we take apart in an online discussion board over the next month, and at the next meeting, we put our ideas from the discussion board into practice and discuss them further. Overall, our discussion is always solution-oriented, and we are working to solve a set action item by the end of our time together. So here are some pictures of what our meetings look like. Part of our meeting after we discuss on the discussion board is breaking into smaller groups so that everyone has a chance to share their ideas. Part of this process is we have a shared Google Doc that each smaller group can put their ideas on, and we get back together as a large group and talk about some of the ideas on the Google Doc. So I have some of those ideas with us today. So what does SSAC do outside of our meetings? So in February, the superintendent holds a State of the Schools Address that we volunteer at every year. So for the people who were in attendance, these are those faces you got to see that day. Here are some pictures from that. And so what were the topics we chose? At the beginning of the year, at our first meeting, we decided that our focus points for the year were going to be college and career readiness and school climate and culture. So on college and career preparedness, these were pulled directly from the Google Doc that we had that I just talked about. So we talked about, we discussed information that would be helpful on a county college and career preparedness website for students and parents interested in learning more about after-high-school options. So the website would include Bright Futures qualifications and requirements, or an organized dropdown of the CTE catalogs, what you need to be preparing for in each grade in order to succeed in your next year, and/or where you need to be during each year, knowing when college applications come out, and knowing about early admissions, and an emphasis on dual enrollment classes and transfer options, and how to transfer. So our second topic that we talked about was school climate and culture. So some of the most popular ideas we discussed to improve school climate and culture were having a school-wide assembly with club officers from different clubs to teach others about their club, having a celebration for ESAL students transitioning into a fully English-speaking environment, having Culture Night at the high schools to highlight and showcase the diversity in our schools, and having class murals made by the class officers to represent each grade level each year. So, how can you or someone you know get involved in SSAC? If you or someone that you know is interested in joining the council next year, your next steps would be checking the Clay County District School's social media page or website. Also, the app, the app that just came out, applications are open to any student in Clay County District Schools, grades 7th to 12th. So any junior high schoolers or high schoolers interested in joining are absolutely able to fill out their application. And then applications are going to open and are due in the fall. So you can start looking for those about end of summer into August, and then applications are due probably about October. So, and then if you have any questions, feel free to email our county Chief of Staff, Mrs. Kelly Watt. And so to end everything, I would like to thank our superintendent for taking time out of his busy schedule to meet with us every month. I'd like to thank all of the students standing here on our advisory council for making this such a productive year. We wouldn't have any of these ideas without all of these people standing up here, so I'll clap for them. I wouldn't have been able to do this without my co-chair, Taylor White. Taylor. He has been keeping everything organized inside and outside of our meetings, and I greatly appreciate him for that. And then I would like to give the biggest shout-out to our Chief of Staff, Ms. Kelly Watt, for putting all of this together and caring so deeply about each and every one of us in our own personal lives as well as our academic lives. So I'll give her a round of applause. So I would like to thank all of you guys for being here this evening, as well as the school board for listening to all of our ideas. It has been so wonderful being allowed the opportunity to represent all of these wonderful people tonight, so thank you.
All right, doesn't she, she just does an amazing job. And I got to say this about Lindsay, she wants to become a teacher one day, and you can imagine, we want her back here in Clay County.
She's hired.
She's hired. Tonight. Yes. So what we're going to do is we're going to go ahead and hand out some certificates, and then we're going to give them the, our seniors, their graduation cords. So I'm going to just start off by, this is going to be for, Lindsay, you want to step on this side? For Lindsay Gillis. Lindsay Gillis. All right, and now Lindsay, I'm going to hold yours, and we're going to go through. Yep. All right, Danielle Ackerson. All right. Isabella Alouquin. Sophia Alvarado. Isabella Amador. Shayla Bivens. Arabelle Conant. Preshad Abhi. Daniel Capusta. Noah Montoro. Carson Nicholson. Molly Patel. Virginia Schaefer. Tessa Wilson. Angel Zhang. Amelia Shalat. Evan Davies. Brenna Finnegan. Jawani Galagarza. Lila Gonzalez. I don't think Laney is here. Sophia Ja. Naomi Hyken. Tayani Maxwell. Allison Musalami. Jordan Myers. Hannah Owen. Rhea Patel. Ava Shabudak. Sean St. Villas. Leah Seibert. Olivia Siliman. Veria Thatch. Chloe Tony. Ashley Zamora. And Taylor White. Round of applause. Thank you. All right. And the last thing is I'm going to ask all seniors, if you can kind of move up here into the middle and get into a line, we'd like to We'd like to recognize this special time for you. Each senior, and if you're a parent of a senior, or you've ever been a parent of a senior, you realize the importance of these graduation cords. And these cords recognize the deep service and contributions they have provided Clay County District Schools. They didn't have to come to this. They didn't have to spend an hour and a half, once a month, and time on a discussion board. It wasn't a grade. They didn't get paid. They volunteered their time and service, and for that, we are deeply appreciative. Congratulations, seniors. Okay. So we're going to do a picture. Can we have our other staff members come around here and kind of gather around these folks? All right, thank you, guys. Next, we have the recognition, or we're going to recognize the President's Volunteer Service Award recipients. Christine Howell, Orange Park High Language Arts Teacher.
Thank you so much. All right, good evening. Again, my name is Christine Howell. I'm a teacher at Orange Park High School, and I am a passionate volunteer in our community. I have the distinct pleasure tonight of honoring some amazing young people in our community. This is the perfect time to give them this award, to them, as recognition, because the springtime seems to be a great time to start doing volunteer work, and it brings out the spirit of volunteers working in all of us. We definitely have a lot of young philanthropists with us here this evening. They volunteer at places like Smile Camp, they tutor students, they serve as managers for various sports all over their high schools in North Florida, they volunteer with Ronald McDonald House, Re-Threaded, Relay for Life, Wounded Warriors, the Clay County Fair, the Clay County Sheriff's Office, Orange Park Athletic Association, Clay County Teen Corps, they serve as members of Students Working Against Tobacco, and are on the board for Clay County SWAT, they volunteer at local hospitals, you name it, our kids are doing it. Now I'm going to tell you a little bit about this award. The President's Council on Service and Civic Participation was established in 2003 to recognize the valuable contributions and volunteers that are making strides in our communities and who encourage more people to serve. The council created by the President's Volunteer Service Award Program is a way to thank and honor Americans who, by their demonstrated commitment and example, inspire others to engage in volunteer service. Recognizing and honoring volunteers sets a standard for service. It encourages a sustained commitment to civic participation, and it inspires others to make service a central part of their lives. The President's Volunteer Service Award recognizes individuals, families, and groups that have achieved a certain standard, measured by the number of hours of service over a 12-month time period, or a cumulative hours earned over the course of a lifetime. Different levels of awards include the Bronze, the Silver, and the Gold Awards. To date, the President's Council has partnered with more than 80 leadership organizations and more than 28,000 certifying organizations to give over 1.5 million awards to the nation's deserving volunteers. Those of you here tonight will be joining this distinguished group. The first person we are honoring is John Richardson from Orange Park High School. Lots of loot. There you go. Okay. The next honoree is Sebastian Lopez, also from Orange Park High School. Okay, our next honoree is Chloe Tony from Middleburg High School. And our next honoree is Marie Grace Mosley from CHS. Our next honoree is Katie Tony, also from Clay High School. Our next honoree is Alexander Blum. Had to remember how to pronounce it. He always tells me, "It's like the plump, like the plump." See, I got it right. Okay, our next honoree is Chloe Crocker from Ridgeview High School. Okay, and our last honoree cannot be here tonight, that is Stella Carter. She is at Orange Park Elementary, but she's off doing other great things. So she's in a dance competition tomorrow, and if she doesn't check in by X time today, she can't compete, so they're on their way to Orlando. So, these are our honorees for this year.
Next up, we have Mr. Chris Google, our Fine Arts Curriculum Specialist, to recognize the Student Composition Contest winners.
Good evening, school board, superintendent, families, and community. Tonight, we are proud to recognize the outstanding student composers who participated in our district inaugural Student Composition Contest. This initiative aligns with the Florida Seal of Fine Arts, specifically the requirement for students to be recognized for the creation of an original work of art. This contest was open to students in grades 9 through 12 across Clay County. Students submitted original compositions in four categories: large ensemble, small ensemble, electronic music, and songwriting. Each piece was carefully evaluated by professionals in the field, including some of the same experts who collaborate with our secondary programs on custom marching band shows. Students whose work met the high-scoring threshold have now fulfilled this important component of the Seal of Fine Arts. Additionally, the top-scoring student in each category has been named a category winner. We are thrilled to celebrate all of these students tonight for their creativity, dedication, and musical artistry. Joining me to help this evening's recognition is Mr. Chad Robbins, Director of Bands at Oakleaf High School. Mr. Robbins is the lead coordinating teacher for this contest. In fact, Mr. Robbins originally approached me with the idea of this contest, pointing out a clear lack of opportunity for our music students to meet this particular component of the seal. And so we were excited to be able to work closely to ensure the competition met the level of rigor expected from Clay County schools, while also aligning with the Seal of Fine Arts component. Without Mr. Robbins' guidance and support, this opportunity would not have come to fruition. Students, we will call each of you up to receive your recognition for high marks on your compositions. Please remain standing up front while we then recognize the category winners and take a group picture. Our first honoree, Aaliyah Callahan, Clay High, Large Ensemble category. Our next honoree is Hayden Sears, Clay High, Large Ensemble category. And next, we have Leonardo Arias, Oakleaf High, Large Ensemble category. And next, we have Caleb Diaw, Oakleaf High, Small Ensemble category. And last, Emilio Maguiash, Oakleaf High, Electronic Music category. And now, recognizing our category winners, students, please step forward as your name is called. First place in Large Ensemble category is Leonardo Arias, Oakleaf High. And first place in Small Ensemble category is Caleb Diaw, Oakleaf High. And first place in Electronic Music category, Emilio Maguiash, Oakleaf High. Students, please step forward and be recognized one more time, and we'll take a group picture. Thank you, students, and congratulations.
Next up, we have the recognition of State and International Science Fair winners with
Hi, good evening. My name is Katie Ruelis. One of the district's science curriculum specialists, one of the most special parts of my job is that I get the privilege of taking these qualifying students to the State and International Science Fairs. This evening, I am thrilled to recognize 14 of our students that participated in the State Science Fair in Lakeland, Florida, last month. As a special note, out of these 14 students, seven of them are returning State Science Fair participants, so they have, what I like to think of it is that they caught the Science Fair bug, and they have, some of them have turned it into like their entire personalities, so I really love that. So, over the course of three days at the State Science Fair, we took two junior-level projects and nine senior-level projects, and we participated in several different events. When we first get there, the students have to make sure that all of their projects have passed the scientific review committee approval process, and then they have to set up their boards and be approved by Display and Safety, and then they sit through a full day of judging, which includes six hours of judging. Oftentimes, they see at least seven different judges that come by to their booths or more. And then they get to go hang out with like-minded individuals at the Student Mixer and interact with their peers, and it's, I lovingly refer to it as their nerd fest. It's amazing. And then we have grand award ceremony where we get to celebrate all of the award winners statewide. So I do want to recognize some people that are not here today because they are very busy. But Ms. Leslie Bryan is another one of our district's science specialists, and she volunteers her time to come chaperone with us as well. And then Ms. Bethany Durusy and Mr. William Durusy, both teachers, one at Ridgeview and one at Clay, and they spend hours and hours of their time making sure their students are prepared for this event. And I am so thankful for their willingness to go above and beyond every year because the event would not be what it is without these amazing people. So, without further ado, I would like to introduce you to the scholars from the Clay Rotary Regional Science and Engineering Fair that participated at the state fair. Several of them are not here this evening for different reasons, so Sophia Araniga from Ridgeview High School, her project was Breath Acetone Sensing: Development of an IoT-enabled Breath Analyzer for Ketosis Detection in Diabetes Management. Ms. Grace Lynn Beckham, who is here this evening. Grace Lynn is one of those who we snagged last year and was very hesitant to even come to district science fair, and this year, she will actually be joining us at the International Science Fair in Columbus, Ohio. So Grace Lynn's project was an evaluation of potential advances in limb immobilization for orthopedic healing, and this was a second-year project, and she scored, earned a fourth-place recognition in her category at state. Next, we have Joshua Chun, who is here this evening from Ridgeview High School. His project, A Novel Study in the Utilization of Artificial Intelligence, Machine Learning, and Convolutional Neural Networks in the Identification of Differing Recyclable Materials. His project also won a fourth place in his category at the state fair. He was recognized with the NASA Kennedy Space Center Award, and he is also one of our nominees for the International Science and Engineering Fair. Lauren Cormier, who is not here this evening from Clay High School. And her project was Bio-Inspired Surfboard Stability. Her project won a recognition award in her category, and she was also offered a $1,000 scholarship nomination at the Florida Gateway College. We also have Brenna Finnigan and Rhea Patel from Ridgeview High School. And their project, which caused me all kinds of problems in the qualification process, was the In-Vitro Antibacterial Activity of Mango Ginger Against Human Oral Bacteria: Measuring Zones of Inhibition. Also not here this evening, James and Joseph Fryman. They are another one of my second-year participants on their Quantitative Assessment of Macromolecular Composition, Lipids and Proteins, Ionic Salinity, and pH Variability in Biochemical Samples. From Clay High School, Austin Hallett. Austin's project, Ion Innovation: Revolutionizing Aerospace Travel with Electric-to-Kinetic Energy Propulsion. His project was awarded fourth place in his category at state. And he was also recognized with the United States Air Force Award, the United States Navy Science Award, and he was offered a scholarship to Florida Polytechnic University, as well as Florida Gateway College. And he is our third nominee to the International Science and Engineering Fair. I don't believe I just saw them, but Anthony Moorejohn and Alex Zinn from Ridgeview High School with their project, The Study of Acid Rain's Retroaggression Towards the Environment in Variable Composition Facilitated by Climate Change. And their project was awarded the Polk Regional Science and Engineering Fair $100 Award at state. Next, we have Calvin Proz from Orange Park Elementary with his project, Is the Five-Second Rule Real? And his project was awarded the Florida Association of Science Supervisors $50 Award at state. We have Cooper White from Grace Episcopal Day School and his project, The Compared Growth of Cayenne Peppers Between Hydroponic and Soil-Growing Methods. And finally, Angel Zinn from Ridgeview High School with her project, Simulation of Electroplating in Seawater Within an Electrolytic Cell Between Zinc and Copper. Congratulations, scholars and scientists. It was such a wonderful experience at the state fair, and we are very much looking forward to Grace Lynn, Josh, and Austin representing us at International Science Fair in Columbus, Ohio, in two weeks. So thank you very much.
Now I'm curious, is the five-second rule real? No, I'm going to keep lying to my kids. Okay. Next up, we have Superintendent Broski, recognizing recipients of the Superintendent's Florida Prepaid Scholarships.
Okay, I love the May Board Agenda. You know why? Because you just saw some great kids doing great things. Everything from the math team on through all of the fine arts and the kids that you just saw on the Superintendent's Advisory Council and all the students that you just witnessed in science. But it's not done, the evening's not done. Just like an infomercial, wait, there's more, okay? You know, the superintendent quite often has very routine things to do. It's a very routinized job. And every once in a while, you get to do something that's really, really cool, right? And so I kind of celebrate that. One of the things you get to do is I get to give out two college scholarships to students in our partnership with Florida Prepaid and their organization. And so through a rigorous process of essays that individual students wrote, a committee was formed, formed a group of students, and these are our two winners here. So these college scholarships, right here, okay? Our very first winner is David Rafalsky from Fleming Island High School. Couple things about David while he walks up here. How about this, his GPA is a 4.75. Over 400 hours of community service right there in this young man. Okay, how about this, had the highest test in Florida for the ACE Chemistry Exam across the entire state of Florida. Does tutoring of students in both math and science. He's senior class president. He embodies leadership and teamwork. Looking ahead, he's going to be a Gator. Majoring in Computer Science. So in other words, we might all be working for him someday. So congratulations, David Rafansky. Our next winner is from Keystone Heights Junior-Senior High School, Arabelle Conant. Arabelle, come on up. You can stand there, we can embarrass you a little bit because Arabelle's a great student also and a great kid. Maintains an impressive weighted GPA of 4.475, balancing her role. She's a Senate page in Tallahassee, as well as a member of the high school basketball team, student body president for the past three years, demonstrating exceptional leadership at Keystone Heights. Her passion for debate, coupled with her strong communication skills through her speech and debate, fuels an interest in policy and advocacy. So I can see her as a top-notch attorney. I asked her what side she was going to represent, and she said what? Wants to be a prosecutor. And I said, good choice, okay? Without further ado, let's give a big round of applause to Arabelle Conant.
All right, this is the last call for comment cards. And next up, there is no comment cards addressing a specific agenda item. So we're going to move on to discussion items. All right. So up next, we have an agenda item pulled, C5, the Proclamation Number 25-17 condemning antisemitism, hatred, and discrimination. Can I get a motion? We have to do a motion and second to discuss, correct? Okay, can I get a motion?
I'll move approval.
I have a motion from Ms. Gilhausen, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Got a second from Ms. Clark. Any discussion?
Did you want to go because you pulled it?
Yeah, I could go. At this... This is a very sensitive topic. So I want to be very precise when I speak because I know certain individuals will take something I said and twist it. So I want to make sure that we are very clear when I speak. As a Christian, I feel that antisemitism goes against all of our principles of Christian faith. And although we have not seen any protests here in Clay County, which has taken place nationwide, I would say that it would be all right to be proactive and establish a proclamation. However, as your board chair, it does require my signature. So I would just ask that... I would like to amend it in a few ways, not major ways, just a few. And so I have brought what I would like to see changed, whether we decide to move forward in adopting this proclamation or if we decide... Whatever the decision it is that we decide, I would like us to consider this proclamation as the amended version. So I will pass this down. And I'm sorry it's late getting to you guys. I don't know if we need to table this and pass it next month or what we need to do. But the proclamation was not available at our workshop. So there was no discussing this. This is a very sensitive topic. So I would just ask that we would consider this. And like I said, you can read it. I kind of put in red what I would like to see changed. And then if there's any further discussion.
I have something that I just... It's a thought. We have been a highly functioning board for a couple of years now. And we went through master board training to learn how to be a highly effective board, which has nothing to do with this proclamation. This has everything to do with how I feel very slighted that one school board member brought something to us when we didn't have a chance to talk about it. I intend to vote today... Not sure how we're working this out, right? Because I haven't really had time to read it. And it was never a negative thing for me. But boards function in state law as a majority vote. We have to have consensus, and we vote on almost everything. We can't pass anything with two board members. We are at our highest and our best when we function together to solve the problems of Clay County schools. And the fact that we didn't get an opportunity to actually look or read the proclamation or have a discussion about the proclamation... We're good people. I imagine we would have had great conversation. So I guess my biggest problem is is I actually would like to suspend all proclamations until a time this board can get together and decide our policy and our procedures for adding proclamations. Boards were never meant to be run by a school board member. And for me... I mean, I can tell you, my husband spent seven years making sure the Camp David Accords were successful. He came home only 20 days a year for our family. I have the highest regard for Israel. I have the highest regard for this proclamation. And I also wanted to say that maybe everyone's not aware that the state of Florida actually, in 2023, Governor Ron DeSantis made sure that our students would learn about the Holocaust. We have a Holocaust Remembrance Day. We have Holocaust lessons in varying abilities from kindergarten all the way through 12th. Some districts have a Jewish Heritage Month celebration or proclamation. Some districts do different things. I just regret the fact that we never got to talk about it. And that's what I wanted to say.
Madam Chair, can I speak?
Yep.
So in line with what you said, Ms. Hanson, I don't see anything in this proclamation that is objectionable, that isn't in line with our current practice. I think it is commendable to be proactive in our stance. And I think because of that, we shouldn't have any issue voting on this proclamation tonight. And I do think we need a policy for how proclamations are brought forward. And that's something we can certainly discuss, but I don't think it would prevent us from voting on this tonight. I think we can take a vote. And then as we are looking at policies in our next workshop, that would be one that we could consider. I know I spoke with Mr. Broski beforehand. I know the city of Green Cove Springs recently passed a policy regarding proclamations for the city. And that might be something we could look at for already-established language and potentially have it ready for the next workshop. But I don't see any reason to postpone voting on this.
Any further discussion?
Yes. I'm sorry that there's a lot of assumptions that have been made. So if y'all will bear with me, I was going to speak from the heart, but I had to make some notes this afternoon. So I'm going to read, which I don't usually like to do. But I'm going to read. And I thought it quite coincidental that today at Alexander Compaers Church, where we celebrated National Prayer Day, that the one deacon started out talking about Israel, praying for Israel. As individuals, we are all molded in many ways by the events of our childhood. The year I was born, believe it or not, was the year of Sputnik, the start of our space race to the moon, and the Little Rock Nine. In 1954, with a separate but equal doctrine being overturned, the superintendent of Little Rock, Arkansas, created a plan to gradually integrate schools. Then the governor sent in the National Guard to prevent the integration. Eisenhower would follow up by sending in federal troops to escort each student at Central High High School to protect them. Last May of '24, witnessing what I saw going on at our university and college campuses across our nation, Jewish students being targeted by protesters, it drew a sharp comparison to what I witnessed growing up in the tumultuous '60s, much of the time in St. Augustine during the civil rights movement. In fact, the summer of '64, when Dr. King marched in St. Augustine, sixteen rabbis would join him. All, of course, arrested because St. Augustine did not want to be known as the town where Dr. King was assassinated. The anger I felt a year ago, May, for these acts and our places of supposed higher education was beyond anything I can explain. So many memories came back of unjust hatred. Since last May, and yes, I've been trying to get this on the agenda for quite a while, I have felt strongly about having this proclamation on our agenda. My anger of what I saw made me want to do something. I thought that maybe if our school board had a proclamation against antisemitism, that maybe others might follow. And maybe as we did in the civil rights movement of the '60s, the majority would eventually say we've had enough of this hatred. Sometimes you just can't sit on the sideline. You have to get... You have to get in the game. Be bold. In fact, Roger Dadeley told me just that when I first got on the school board. Be bold. Some folks have said, why not make it against all discrimination? As a district, we are against all discrimination. But a year ago May, I saw only Jewish students fearing for their lives. With this proclamation, I simply wanted to say that our district is committed to stand up against the bullying, teach about the Holocaust, and prepare our students with the truth as they head off to these colleges and universities, empowering them to be better citizens, not to succumb to these foolish acts. Two-thirds of Jewish students, which is 67%, feel unsafe on college campuses. 1,694 incidences on college campuses in 24, 2024, an 87% increase from '23. In 2024, 9,354 antisemitism incidences across the nation. That's a 5% increase from '23, but a 344% increase over the past five years, an 893% increase over the past 10 years. And some folks say that the Hamas-led attacks on Israel, October 7, '23, never happened. So when is it going to stop? Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? So the only thing that I have really, other than a few words here and there, just taking out different, different things, I just asked that we add the persecution of Christians to this as well. And I know you've, I don't know if you've had a second to read this, if you need a second to read this before we move forward on what we need to, if we want to vote for an amended version, or if we want to keep the original. But I don't know if I need, should I read this out for everybody? Should I? Or should we?
So ma'am, we just want to make sure there's a motion and a second for whatever.
We have a motion and a second for the original document.
For discussion.
And I think, yeah, right.
For the, yeah.
Right. So I think you need a motion for this amended version.
So, correct.
Yeah.
So, but I'm, see, I just want you guys to take the time to read it for a second and see if you guys want to amend it. If not, that's fine. We can vote on the original. I was just felt convicted with my own personal beliefs. And as Christians, we stand with Israel. We all took, well, I shouldn't say we all, some of us took an hour or so today on the National Day of Prayer to pray for every religion, every government entity, and for Israel. And so I just feel that, that last sentence is important.
Madam Chair, so if there's, if there's an amendment, the maker of the motion can amend the motion. If there's a desire to amend it, then we would amend the second. So that would be the procedural way to proceed. If there is a desire to amend the motion.
So if there's no motion to amend at this time? Okay, so we will vote on the original document?
Madam Chair, because this is now a voting matter, we're going to have to open up to the public for public comment.
Madam Chair, I am in favor of amending it.
You are in favor of amending? Okay, so, because he didn't do the motion, so.
Understood. So right now, we have a motion and a second. So if the maker of the motion does not amend or withdraw, then we need to open up for public comment. The public comment could be for all, all this, this voting matter. But we would need to have a vote. And then if the vote does not proceed, or there's not a passing of the policy, then we could entertain additional motions.
We already had the time for public comment, correct? This isn't a public hearing.
Right. That's where I'm getting confused.
Right. I think it's just at this point, we need to vote on the current motion.
Because nobody wanted to speak on.
Okay. Well, we just want to make sure the audience was clear on that, that everyone was aware.
It's on the original document that was attached to the agenda, which is why I would rather stick with this language, because this is a significant change. And if we're going to make a significant change, I think that needs to be brought back after the, so the public has time to see it.
Well, understood. But we also want to make sure normally y'all's proclamation is voted on. So we want to make sure if members of the public, because under statute, they still have that opportunity to speak. So there may be members of the public that were not aware of y'all's procedures. So we just want to make sure that's clear, that the speaking opportunity was prior to this.
Right.
There's not confusion. Okay.
And if we want to consider this, since we're going to vote on the motion as it stands, if this language wants to be reconsidered at a later date, it could always be added at a later date. Does that make sense? So Mr. Alvaro, if you wanted to have it placed on the agenda at another time, you could. Does that make sense? Correct? Okay.
Okay. So since we, you're not withdrawing and you're not amending, so we're going to, at this time, if there's no further discussion, we would then vote on this, because it's been pulled.
Is there, just a, just a quick word? I mean, Ms. Gilhousen is right. We have an additional language. It wasn't advertised, it wasn't attached. And I am comfortable with this original proclamation, especially because Holocaust Remembrance Day observed began in sunset April 23 to April 24, 2025. So had this been put on in the May agenda, it would have suited the purpose for recognition and the, I guess the purpose of the proclamation at the time. I am, like I said, I am not happy about the fact that we didn't get to talk about it. Because had we had talked about it, I know that this board, in all their wisdom and kind heart, would have had some great conversation about this. And at that time, maybe had some other conversation about proclamations. I still think we're safest when following Robert's rule is to either adopt the original proclamation, and then maybe we can add to the June workshop discussions about how our proclamations should be brought forward. Do we want it with a majority of the board? Can the chair and the superintendent bring one forward? But at this time, because it was advertised, although I like the wording of the second one, the one that was advertised is the original proclamation number 25-17. And I also wanted to add that the wording, the school district aims to create a culture of respect and understanding where all students feel safe and valued. As a teacher for 20 years, and then other things in Clay County, I'm proud to say that during that entire time, thousands and thousands of schools, over eight different schools, I had never experienced discrimination and antisemitism. I'm not saying it hasn't happened. But I can tell you this. We are blessed with a military community, with people from all parts of the world, all religions. And I'm grateful that we live in such a place that I can say, I've been here all this time and don't, I mean, Mr. Brodsky, it's not a problem in Clay County.
No, ma'am, we have a code of conduct and we handle any incident, whether it's antisemitic or not, of this nature, according to that document.
And I believe Florida statute covers this as well. So that's my reasons for saying we keep the original one. But I think there needs to be a discussion on the May 27 workshop.
And the discussion would be regarding a policy for submitting?
Yes. Proclamations. And maybe the types of proclamations that we may or may not want in the Clay County schools.
I would also like to add that moving forward, I would like to discuss it at a workshop before voting on something. Because like I said, I think that, just my own personal convictions. And by the way, for the audience to know, because again, this is a very sensitive subject. And I know there's others out there who are, have different agendas. So I just want to point out, the original, the wording is all the same except for one sentence. So just, just so we're clear of what I wanted to actually change. So that being said, we have a motion from Ms. Gilhousen. We have a second from Ms. Clark.
If I could just, if I could just add one, one point, because I think the board has indicated changing it. Just to point to your board policies, just to, just to make sure we're clear about the proclamation. So the, the board policy reads, "The superintendent shall establish the agenda for school board meetings and workshops in collaboration with board, with the board chair. School board members may add items to the agenda for board action, and no such item may be removed from the agenda without the board member's consent." So the way y'all are currently set up is any board member can add any agenda item to the agenda. And only that board member can, can remove that. That is different from most other government entities, from most other government school boards. Most do it through consensus. That way, there's a question, you know, here's a proposed agenda item, is there consensus? That way, you don't have any board member potentially adding agenda items that the, that the rest of the board would not be in agreement with. So this may be simply, since y'all are going through the Neola process and going through that, we can reach out to Neola. So it's not so much only about, I want to make sure we're clear, your policy is not just about proclamations, it could be any agenda item. Any, any of y'all can bring forth any agenda item, and only that board member can place it or remove it. That's just a unique to y'all's board, that's really not across the state of Florida, you don't see that. So this may be part of the policy that we can reach out to Neola and see if they, we can modify that policy where it's either by consensus. There's more consensus prior to an agenda item being, being placed. Or, you know, maybe the chair, the vice chair has some, some type of oversight. You know, consensus is the most common that you see in boards and school boards. There's consensus. So if a board member wants to add an agenda item about a proclamation or a discussion item, then there will be consensus at the board meeting to do that. So that may be a simple change. That way, y'all are not creating additional new policies, you're just modifying the existing policy. Does that make sense to the board? Okay.
All right. So we have a motion from Ms. Gilhousen, a second from Ms. Clark. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, 5-0. All right. Next up, we have special action, human resources special action aim. Can I get a motion for approval?
I'll move approval.
I got a motion from Ms. Gilhousen. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Ms. Clark. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, 5-0. Next up, we have the consent agenda. We have the proclamation number 25-18 to establish May 2025 as Mental Health Month. We have proclamation number 25-19 to establish May 2nd-25 as National Speech Language Hearing Month. And May 18, 2025, as National Speech Language Pathologists Appreciation Day, Professionals Day in Clay County.
Madam Chair, my computer's locked up, so would I then just, you'll listen for my, thank you, Ms. Bonnie.
And so we are going to go to the adoption. Well, we have the proclamation number 25-17 to condemn antisemitism, hatred, and discrimination, which we just voted on. The adoption of the consent agenda notes that items C27 has been withdrawn and C5 was moved to the discussion agenda. So can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve.
I have a motion from Ms. Clark. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Ms. Gilhousen. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, 5-0. All right. At this time, we are going to do presentations from the audience, public comment. We are going to place the notification on our PowerPoint. And remember that you have three minutes. First up, Ms. Sheila Torres. Mr. Bruce Friedman, you're on deck. And please state your name and address.
My name is Sheila Torres. My address is on file. So like always, I'm always coming over here to ask for accountability and transparency. But before I get into that, I want to hit Mr. Superintendent, because in last board meeting, he said not everything that you read or hear on Facebook is real. At the end of the day, whatever I spoke about last, last month, it had nothing to do about Facebook. But what I did see in Facebook, that you guys was looking for a wrestling coach in Fleming Island. That's the only thing I did see on Facebook. But obviously, I guess that was a lie. Well, nevertheless, accounting and transparency. I am one of the parents of Clay County where my kids go to school. I am requesting and most of demanding that you guys put a camera in the classroom, like I said it before, that keeps our teachers safe and our students. Now, there was an incident that transpired not so long ago, where there was a teacher that was, basically, she likes to pick and choose. And what she does is that whatever kid that she's okay with, she treats nice, she don't have a problem explaining. Kids that she don't like, she treat them like crap. She mimics them, she makes fun of them in the classroom. That creates a toxic environment. Now, the thing about it is that I know that we need the teachers, they need better pay grade. But at the same time, 30 kids in environmental science, make that make sense. Especially when y'all saying, oh, there's a lot of discipline issues or whatever the case might be. Okay, let us see it. You guys already have cameras throughout the whole school. You guys already approving to record the audio. Okay, let's put a camera in the classroom. Let's see what's really going on in the classroom. Because like I said it before, if the teacher's doing everything per protocol, what is the problem? If the kid is acting up, let us see it. Not anybody's going to be watching the camera 24/7 while the kids in school. But if there's an incident that transpired, it's not that hard to pull up that camera, that image, or that time and that date recording for us to see what's going on. There's a lot of stuff that's going on in this, in this district that you guys are aware. There's admin tells, there's supervisor, supervisor tells the secondary, the secondary tells the superintendent, guess what? Nothing is done. And what I feel that these policies that you are guys are trying to implement, the, what is it, the complaint policy, is basically to protect your teachers and yourself. It's nothing in order to protect our kids, in order for us to advocate for them. I am requesting and most of demanding, like I stated, to put a camera in the classroom. That's it. Now, everybody's going to see it, but at the end of the day, if there's an incident that's transpiring between the student and another student, or student and a teacher, we can view it. We not going to go off of hearsay, because when a parent brings something up or a student brings something up, it's hearsay. But if a teacher brings something up, an admin brings something up, oh, no. We got to believe them in every aspect. That is wrong. And I had caught teachers in high school lying about their student conduct and over-exaggerating just for their students to get in trouble. Please let screen cameras inside the classroom.
Mr. Friedman? I think this is Corey Johnstone. You're on deck.
Hi, Bruce Friedman, address on file. I'm going to read to you, a copy was given to you earlier. I hope you'll look at it in all your hands. This is a paradigm shift from what's been going on with regards to choosing books for the school. We've been working on rubrics and guidelines and policies and procedures, and the governor and the legislature are beating up statutes and laws. This is from an author. In choosing books for children, these rules are worth the consideration of parents. And accordingly, they're worth your consideration. Number one, read your children's books yourself. Or better still, get your boy or girl to read them aloud to you. Ask yourself during the reading, does this book lay stress on villainy? Is it making bad guys seem like good guys? Deception or treachery? Are all the incidents wholesome, probable, and true to life? Granted, there's a place for science fiction and fantasy and other adventures in the library, but wholesome is the key word there. Does it show young people contemptuous toward their elders and successfully opposing them? Goes to planting better seeds. You want a better crop of students and children and future taxpayers? Stay wholesome. Do the young characters in the book show respect for teachers and others in authority? That'd be a nice lesson to teach as well. That'd be a nice lesson to teach as well. Are these characters the kind of young people you wish your children to associate with? I think that one carries most of the weight of what's gone wrong in our libraries. Most of these are bad examples, and not a negative example you could learn from, but actually teaching you to head down the wrong road. A couple more bits. Does the book speak of and describe pranks, practical jokes, pieces of thoughtless and cruel mischief, as though they were funny and worthy of imitation? Again, plant better seeds. Is the English good, and is the story written in good style? Well, that might be too much to ask from the thousand-plus books that I've read from your libraries. Most of them are garbage. I brought a couple with me today. Going bovine by Liba Bray. I will be submitting a formal challenge for that one, it's gross. And an informal challenge, bless you. Be Real Macy Weaver by Lakita Wilson. This one is recently added to the collection at Spring Park Elementary. It's driving home lessons on fluid gender, pronouns are mentioned six times, the phrase gender neutral is in there four times. It's crap. If you want to teach lies to your children, buy the book on Amazon, bring it home, have at it. Don't spend our tax dollars on garbage. Thank you, have a great night.
Up next is Corey Johnstone, and if you are a student, please do not state your address. Mr. Johnstone, are you, okay. And then, I'm sorry, I'm trying to read the handwritings, I think it says, I'll just go with Ms. Jeanette, you'll be on deck.
Just whenever I'm ready.
Yep.
Members of the school board, my name is Carrie Johnston. I'm standing here before you today to talk about some of the books that are being banned in Clay County. And according to the Fleming, whoa, Fleming Island website, some of them make sense, like Stephen King was never a teen writer, he was always an adult writer, that makes sense. George R.R. Martin's Game of Thrones, obviously very explicit, obviously not a good idea to keep in high schools. But then, some just don't make sense. Like, and I have a couple with me. The book Go Ask Ellis by Anonymous is under the drugs or criminal activity, which is right. Mostly only talks about the negative effects, though, and I believe that especially high school students should be reading about the negative effects of drugs on the body and mind. I also find it ironic that the same people, the same students here today that are standing against book bans, aren't able to read Fahrenheit 451 by Bradbury, which is about banning all reading. Luckily, my high school was able to put on a production of Fahrenheit 451, so I got to learn more about the meaning of it. I believe that it's important for people to read Fahrenheit 451, because it talks about the same situation we're starting to go through now in schools, specifically across Florida, where books are being removed from shelves for one reason or another, because somebody said something about it. And I really believe that it's trying to keep education out of the hands of people who should be learning about these problems. I also found out on the Fleming website that Lord of the Flies was also banned. And Lord of the Flies is a really good story to learn how governments are organized and how they're easier to understand. George Orwell's 1984 is also one that is, albeit controversial, banned, even though it describes governments that are trying to take control by keeping information out of the hands of the people. And the idea that it's banned is just ironic, to say the very least. That is all I have to say about it. I personally believe that banning these books is preventing us from learning about our personal liberties, and I believe it damages our intelligence as a whole. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Jeanette? Leo Larson, you're on deck.
Can I just ask for a quick point of clarity?
Ms. Jeanette, you're up, and then Leo Larson will be after you.
Can I ask for a quick point of clarity?
Yes, you can.
1984, Fahrenheit 451, Lord of the Flies, to my knowledge, are not banned books in Clay County schools.
Lord of the Flies. Maybe Lord of the Flies.
Okay, thank you.
But it was when I was a teacher as well.
Go ahead, you can just state your name, you don't have to state your address.
Hello, my name is Kai Jeanette, I'm a senior in Clay County. I'm against the book ban, and if you care about the minds of the growing children in your county, you should be too. The very books that shape and grew myself and many of my peers are being banned. One of the main ones I want to address, which now I'm not too sure about, is Fahrenheit 451. This book was a staple in many English classes as it showed the damage, destruction, and chaos that the restriction of books could cause. I hope it's understood that the real damage is not caused from the banning of the books themselves. The damage is caused when stories that promote thinking are being considered unfit in a place of learning. When books that show the damage of books being taken are being banned, I start to wonder what the real criteria for the book ban is. The stories that simply show life paths you've been fortunate enough to never step foot on are being banned, I start to fear what the education of those younger than me will look like. I encourage you, the Board of Education, to take the necessary steps to protect the free-thinking minds of the youth. These steps include promoting stories that show the damage of a restriction of knowledge itself, that show the paths and struggles of the lives of others that others have lived, and then encourage the questioning of the world around them. I hope you will take the necessary steps to protect and grow the minds of the youth. Thank you, that's all.
Leo Larson?
Good evening, my name is Leo Larson. I'm here to speak out about the censorship on education and standing up for mine and others' futures. Recently, my school had a peaceful protest regarding budget cuts, book bans, and feeling like we're not seen by our county and by our state. Like I said, it was a peaceful protest. A group of my classmates got together and wrote in chalk and how we feel like there's limits on our education, and that we shouldn't be censored, because every day, our school curriculum is constantly being changed to support the comfort of the people in charge of it. I feel like every day, I'm being restricted from my own right to learn. I want to be, I want to go out and read more books, I always want to get smarter. But how can I do that if the books that I want to read are being stripped from our starving, to, but how can I do that if the books I want to read are being stripped from our starving libraries? Every day, I walk past my library and wonder what it will be like tomorrow, because I don't know the lengths of my county. I don't know, I don't know the lengths they will go to limit the uneducated, to limit its own students. I'm here to spread awareness to the mass book bans that are currently happening, and I'm here to defend the education for every student from now and in the future of Clay County. Thank you for your time.
Sylvia?
Hi, my name is Sylvia McCrany, and I'm sure y'all know me by now. We do have some different websites, like they have Visit Clay County, or Visit Fleming Island Today and all that stuff, and I would be, that talk about what books are banned, and I would be happy to print out a list of these sources and give them to you guys, so you can know exactly where you pulled this information from. So, I'm here to speak out against book bans, once again. You try to say every choice you make, every book that you ban is for our children. Well, we're here to tell you today that the blindfold is off. No longer will we sit idly by while you take our learning materials. Banning books only for standard courses while allowing honors and college-level classes to read whatever they want is clearly an attempt to keep the uneducated uneducated. It's conniving, and you plan to limit education is a sneaky deliberate task. You knew if you banned AP and dual enrollment books, the backlash should be much more immediate. Instead, you choose the method that would gain traction, too little, too late, taking books from standard classes and libraries. Everyone should find this terrifying, and if you still assert that the parents who suggest, that there are parents who suggest these books to ban, why do we let one person decide what books are available to other people's kids? And are we certain that the people putting these book ban requests in are even parents? How do we know it isn't just a random person with no stakes in this, whose kid isn't even actively attending a school in this district? You can say all you want that you aren't really banning books, you're just removing them, removing them permanently, where if a librarian or teacher tries to teach these books, they could be facing legal repercussions. Sounds like a ban to me. You're removing books by Maya Angelou, Flannery O'Connor, and Richard White. These books, quite frankly put, are not pornographic. Almost all the books you ban aren't. Have you ever read any of these books? Are any of you worse off because of them? Students consume far worse media. I'm certain you won't ban the Bible, even with verses such as, "Bruise the teats of their virginity, and since he was stronger than her, he raped her, and she lusted after her lovers, whose genitals were like those of donkeys." I know this is, I know this because it is still in our school libraries. You are taking away our ability to learn and grow, an obvious attempt to keep us uneducated and ignorant, such as keeping books that only fit into your rhetoric. And you say that we can buy the books ourselves. Will you pay for our copies? You say that you can go into the local library, who will provide transportation. It's a well-known fact that the more uneducated you are, the easier to control. The cage bird doesn't dream of flight if he's never seen the sky. America was built on the principle of freedom, especially the freedom of speech. We have the right to an education, the right to books, and the right to thrive. You are taking countless opportunities away from us. Now is the time to stand up, not just for yourselves, but for the future generations and classes that are up and coming. We are not confused, and more and more of us are showing up and beginning to speak out. The time for change was yesterday. We must protect our most valuable resource, free thinking. After all, education is a right, not a privilege, and we will no longer sit in silence. Oh, and also, real quick, as a Catholic, no one is persecuting Christians. I feel like I am far, far, far more likely to be persecuted for being queer than believing in God, so just thought I'd tack that one in. Thank you.
Syria, man. Watch the news. One was just beheaded, but Dr. Chandra Nicole Holssley, you are up next.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Shonda Nicole Holssley. My address is on file. I'm the mother of two Clay County students. One is a college-bound junior. Her name is Savannah. She has and is currently taking several AP courses and have passed exams, providing her with early college credits. She will also participate in dual enrollment, that program, next year. She attends Fleming Island High School. So, this will help her to graduate early and also help our family to fiscally benefit from her achievements. So, board members, I'm aware of an education bill, HB 7030, currently being discussed in the Florida Legislature. I've been tracking it and believe that it has now been forwarded to the committee for discussion, and if it's passed, it can potentially cut AP, IB, ACE, dual enrollment programs, and CTE programs by half. I personally reached out to my senator and congressman expressing my concern, and I know that you're the elected, your elected body is not the decision-makers for this proposed bill, however, I wish to publicly share it and address this topic, because I know at the beginning of the year, one of the things that you discussed was how proud you are of your CTE programs, and providing the opportunity for other students that might not attend college to have a successful career. Additionally, according to the website, IB programs will provide world-class education that prepares students with intellectual, social, and critical perspectives necessary for college and the rest of their lives. And all seven high schools in Clay County offer accelerated learning programs. As just shared with the superintendent's Student Advisory Council member presentation, and with my daughter Savannah, Clay County students benefit from these amazing programs. Actually, my youngest daughter has been accepted into the pre-ACE program and will be starting at Green Cove Middle School next year. So, it's my earnest hope that funding for the accelerated learning programs are not reduced but increased. And as you are the representatives for our Clay County students, I have some specific questions for you. One, what are you currently doing or can do in your elected capacity to advocate for these programs? If the bill does make it out of committee and passes, and funding is decreased, what is your plan to mitigate the harm of these reductions for our Clay County students? What are you doing to proactively prepare? I hope that there is a plan in place. And finally, what would you advise engaged parents to do regarding this matter? Thank you for listening to me, and I look forward to your feedback.
Mr. Donald Treese? And I know normally we wait till public comment to speak on some of these matters, but I just wanted to let you know, Dr. Chandra, we, a couple of us went to Clay Day, which I'll touch on in board comments, but we have actively went to Tallahassee to advocate for these programs and have actively spoke to our delegation here in Clay County. So, that is one thing that we are doing.
Don Treese, my address is on file. I've talked to you three times, this is the third time on the National Day of Prayer, so you've already recognized it, so. But anyhow, I want to direct you to a website, it's pretty good, that Dutch Sheets has it, and that's what I'll read from briefly. It's 15 minutes, so I'll cut it short, but it's givehim15.com. Today is the National Day of Prayer in America. The year's theme is Pour Out to the God of Hope and Be Filled. Please take some time today to join, and it's like you've already said, some have already done that, but visit that site, National Day of Prayer website. Let's go straight to the prayer. Talking to the heavenly Father. Father, this is a significant day in America, a spot apart, a set apart day with your church, where your, when your church crosses denominations, cultures, and political lines, humbles itself and prays together for our nation. It is so important that we set apart a national, government-honored day to seek you. America is in desperate need of your guidance and direction. Forgive us for our national sin of rejecting you and neglecting to seek your plans and your ways. You have, we have wandered far from you, yet you are merciful. I don't want to get short, I know y'all are going to listen to a lot of things tonight, but thank you for the opportunity to recognize the National Day of Prayer. Thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. Vicki Kidwell with a three-minute union update.
Good evening. We appreciate your willingness to hear the concerns of educators for three minutes. This year, Florida's ranking of beginning teacher pay fell nationally, beginning teacher pay from 16 to 17. Average teacher pay continues to rank at the bottom of the nation, 50th out of 50 states and DC. Florida's dubious distinction of 50, second year in a row. The Florida Legislature's inadequate funding of public schools is something we all worry about. Clay County educators have reached out to legislators with phone calls and emails nearly 200 times during this legislative session. It's up to all of us to advocate for fully funding our public schools. I'm glad to hear that parents are calling too. I hope that parents and all of the school board members have been calling and emailing over and over again. We understand that tight budgets from Tallahassee mean hard choices at every district. While we wait for the final budget numbers, it's important While we wait for the final budget numbers, it's important to remember that budgets do reflect priorities. Teachers want to know that competitive salaries for veteran teachers will be a top priority for this district. Next week, May 5th through 9th, is Teacher Appreciation Week, but it's often difficult for teachers to feel appreciated in Florida. This story is from a veteran teacher. I'm writing to you not only as a dedicated educator with nearly 20 years of experience, but also as a parent of a teacher who has followed in my footsteps. Teaching is more than just a profession. It is a lifelong commitment to shaping young minds, mentoring new educators, and ensuring student success. While I am thrilled that the state has finally taken steps to provide new teachers with competitive starting salaries, I'm deeply disheartened by the neglect of veteran teachers who have dedicated decades to this profession. Despite my years of service, my daughter, who has only been teaching for a few years, earns nearly the same salary as I do. Veteran teachers are the foundation of our schools, providing stability, guidance, and expertise that directly impacts student achievement. Without experienced educators, new teachers lack the mentorship they need, and schools lose the institutional knowledge that drives success. I ask you to consider implementing a veteran teacher step plan that ensures fair and equitable compensation based on years of service. Our salaries should reflect our expertise, our dedication, and the rising cost of living. A structured pay scale that rewards longevity would not only recognize the hard work of veteran teachers, but also encourage retention, benefiting both educators and students alike. I urge you to take a serious look at the disparity in veteran teacher pay and work toward a solution that honors the contributions of those who have given decades to this profession. Please do not let the knowledge and experience of your most dedicated educators be overlooked. Investing in our veteran teachers is an investment in the future of Clay County students. Thank you.
Is Mr. Lonnie present? All right, next up is Mr. Broski with a superintendent update.
All right, fantastic. Everybody excited?
Yes.
All right, awesome. Okay. Before I go into my presentation, I just want to kind of comment about the last two or three presenters and just provide some context. One, you know, Dr. Holssy, let me just say, you know, this related to funding, you know, the concern, the concern is there, and the concern has to do with what's called FTE add-on funding for all of those programs. So in Clay County, that amount of money would go from 5.8 million to 2.9 million in Clay County in real numbers. And so we appreciate your advocacy for that. And I think just in general, when I look at what's happening at the state level, it's no secret that the House and the Senate aren't, aren't on the same page when it comes to funding, more so than I've ever seen in my years. So that causes great concerns for folks that are in charge of school districts, and so we feel that. So I just wanted to reassure you that, yes, we totally get it. And so there are several things that we're doing now to be proactive related to that. I've made a commitment that we're not going to do anything that harms children. Children are the number one reason why the organization exists, so there'll be no cutting of programs or any of that stuff related to that. We're going to have to find a way because children are a top priority. When it comes to teachers' salary, I think that talking to the same group of folks would be advantageous. I think that this board has shown their commitment. The number would be 58 million over four years, which the four-year period would be two and a half times more than any other four-year period in the history of Clay County. Okay, so I think when you look at that number, okay, it shows the commitment of the board towards that. Do we believe, I think we all believe, because we've all talked about it, we all believe that veteran teachers should receive higher salaries. We're all committed to that. It comes down to whether or not the resources are there to do that. So I think that we're all on the same page, but the resources have to be there in order to do that. And there's great concern because if you watch the news, it's great concern for everybody related to that. So hopefully, it's too early to tell what's going to happen there because I think they'll, they'll have a little bit more time in order to figure it out, but then we'll see where we're at to there. We've, we've proven by action the commitment towards that, and if the funding's there, we'll be glad to prove it again. Okay, with that in mind, okay, Math Field Day, we've seen that, oh my gosh. It's the only time I get to do the wave, so I guess it's one of my favorite events for that, for that reason. It's fantastic event. All the students there, over 500 students on a Saturday for math. That's amazing, totally amazing. How about this? And we should have really gotten these folks together. Our district academic team from Clay County placed second in the state. Little known fact, I don't know if you guys, yeah, they deserve a round of applause. I don't know if you can see, you see David as the, the tall young man that received the scholarship. He's in the front on the picture on the right. He's holding up a picture of Greg Martin. Remember Greg Martin was the coach that passed away earlier and that whole sad story. And I looked at the picture really close and noticed that, and I just wanted to point that out to the board. Great group of kids, second in the state, nothing to sneeze at there. Kindergarten registration, let me just say, kindergarten registration is open. Please register for your kindergartner for next school year. In fact, we've done several things to prepare. Just as a reminder, you'd be five years old, honor before September 1st, 2025, to register for, for kindergarten, birth certificate, proof of residency, and your, your health documents are needed. We revamped the website to make it easier. One of the things that we've heard was, hey, it's too complicated to register for school. So if you go into our website, you can see the button, you just simply click the button, it says, hey, what school do I go to? Click that button, and it'll tell you how to figure that out. If you were to go over the QR code, it talks about kindergarten tours. So you can see a listing on there of when they're giving tours of the school. We realize that especially if your kindergartner's your oldest, you might be worried about sending your child to school. Why not take them on a tour, get to see the school? And reassure you that those are some good folks out there doing good work each and every day. So revamped website, trying to make it easier. Parents, please go ahead and register. The benefits of, of being in kindergarten are great for a young person starting their academic career. We have a teacher recruitment fair. It's Tuesday right here at Fleming Island High School. All you need to do is come with your smile on, your resume, and, and be ready to, we hire about 70 or so people. Contracts are given out at that, out that event. So if you want to be a teacher, ever thought about being a teacher? That's your opportunity, 5 to 7 o'clock. All administrators will be there interviewing people on the spot, getting ready to offer some contracts out to people for the next, the next group of educators. It is Teacher Appreciation Week, and nobody more the backbone of Clay County schools than teachers. Teachers are the ground floor, they have the contact with, with students. That makes them the stars of what happens in Clay County schools. We should appreciate teachers each and every day, not just during that week, but this has signified out traditionally. In order to do that, we've got some of the best teachers in the entire state of Florida right here in, in Clay County. So let's make sure that we, we show the appreciation of that. I, you know, I was, interestingly enough, we had a, a group of teachers from the Netherlands come in exchange program to Clay County through our professional development office, and they, they went to a couple of schools, and, and this might provide a little solace for some of the teachers that are out there. I went to their, their meeting, and first of all, it was kind of interesting, just the cultural difference. They all, when they walked into the room, they all stood by the round tables, by their spot, and nobody sat down. Because in their culture, you don't sit down till you're told to sit down. And of course, you know, my kids would have, you know, probably put their feet up on the table or whatever, right? You know, we just have a whole different culture. They stood there waiting to be told, go ahead and have a seat. And then I had conversations with them, and, and some of the same frustrations, I found it amazing, the conversations that I had with them are the same conversations that we're having here today, and the same conversations that I have with teachers all the time. And so in my book, teachers are at the top of, of the, of the grouping. Anytime I go somewhere, and Sue cracks up at this, when they say, who, who are you? And I say my name, and they say, what do you do? I say, I'm a teacher. Right? I don't tell people I'm superintendent of the schools. I always say I'm a teacher because in my heart, I still believe I'm a teacher. Right? So let's show our appreciation for teachers out there next week. Kelly's giving me an amen over here, over my shoulder, because she's, she's been around when I introduced myself as a teacher. Upcoming events, let me just say this, today, May 1st, is also Principal Appreciation Day. Okay? Let me just say something about principals. Being a principal may be the toughest job in all of Clay County schools because a lot comes down on that individual. That individual's the mayor of a small city. They have a lot of different people to try to make happy in very difficult circumstances. Right? Every student learns a different way. Every teacher has a, a different style about them. It's, it's very difficult to be in that position. I was a principal three times, three different schools. Let me tell you, I can certify it's the toughest job that I've ever had. Also, one of my favorites, if I had to do it again, I'd be a high school principal again. That was my favorite position. Not that I don't like this one, but you got to go to prom and other cool things. It was, was more fun than this one. Okay, I hate to say that out loud.
Be honest, they're all your favorite.
No, I would say that this job is less fun than being a, being a high school principal. May 2nd, lunch, school lunch hero day. Then we have Nurses Day, the athletic award show, the fine art show. A lot happens in May. Of course, assessment season kicked off today also, so there's a lot going on in the school system. I always say, when you go into May, put your seatbelt on, and, and it goes by very, very quick. Today was the last school board meeting that students were in session, so I appreciate the board's willingness to have so many of them come before. It really is a big deal for young people, and it also sets the tone that that's what we're really about. So thank you so much.
School Board Attorney, Attorney comments. All right, so Mr. Alvaro, would you like to go first this, this week? I always do ladies first, so I feel bad when I...
Well, since I got elected November 5th, 2024, I've visited 22 schools, and I can share with you guys that all I have seen is safe schools, clean, and good administrators doing the job for our children. I ask, what did they need from us? And the response is, the district has our back. I mean, there is nothing that the district doesn't do for them. I have visited several junior high schools that are getting ready to get their sixth graders, and they just build new buildings for them to have them comfortable, have all the, the things they need. So that's all I can say right now. Thank you.
Ms. Hanson, start on that and then work our way to...
So I want to, I want to address the comments about the book banning. So I would love for one of you or all of you to email me. I actually spent about 12 months writing a policy and working with wonderful district personnel who clearly understand what is appropriate as teachers. I was an English teacher. What is appropriate and what is not appropriate. So the information I could give you would be valuable, and let me tell you why. I just opened up the district reconsideration list. I know how to use it. I do often. I sorted by author, and then I sorted by title. And so what I wanted to tell you was, you are right about George Orwell, 1984, the graphic novel only. In addition, Fahrenheit 451, which was my favorite dystopian text to teach to ninth graders, it is not removed from Clay County schools. Go Ask Alice was found to be problematic for younger kids. It was remain in collection and keep in high school only. So if you would like to learn what it is we're trying to do, I would love to get together and talk about that. This board has agreed to review our community standards for books this summer. I would love to have that conversation with you. I would love to know what you think is appropriate and not appropriate, because I think it's important that we stay in touch with what's happening in this world. But I can tell you that great books are not being, you, you do say banned, but the terminology of banned, if you look it up in Webster Dictionary, or any dictionary for that matter, is not what we're doing in Clay County schools. What we are doing is removing books that violate statute, and sometimes, as in the graphic novel, the pictures are way more than we needed or could have gotten from the words themselves. So I would love to talk with you. If you would send me an email, I'd love to sit down about community standards, especially because you are in high school and you, you actually have formulated what you think should be and shouldn't be happening in our school libraries. And I do appreciate you getting up there, and I know it's nerve-wracking because I get nervous just talking like this, but please shoot me an email, I'd love to talk about it. And I also just wanted to say that Morning Star Church, many of us were there this morning for prayer, and I felt good about it all day. It's something we should do more of and be more appreciative of and more considerate of what's going on in the world, and be appreciative for what we have. As for our teachers, I think that's the hill we're all going to die on and do the best we can for our salaries, your salary, my daughter's salary, my friends' salaries, to keep our best teachers in the classroom. That's what I know this board is committed to do. How we do that is a little tricky, and we'll have to wait for the legislators to decide. But that's all I have.
Ms. Clark?
I first wanted to say to each of the students that came before us to talk about the books. Thank you. Your heart's in it. I've read most of those books, and I think they're great. So in fact, I'd like our libraries to add, probably said it before, more books about coping skills because we really like it. I don't know if we had the meeting for the internal audit committee before the last meeting or not, but the first one was great, and Ms. Hanson did a great job. So I think it went, it was off to a very good start, and thank you to our attorney for giving such great instruction. As far as Clay Day, I had to make the decision the Sunday before to cancel due to my workload, but the nice part is with Clay Day, all of our representatives are in our phones, and they're very accessible. We can call them about anything, and I think they've all heard from us about these issues. So we just continue, continue on. But what I did have, when I didn't go to Clay Day, I had a sixth grader at an elementary school who invited me to lunch, which was great fun, always enjoy that. And then I was able to talk to someone later with a business about funding for the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, which we need more people to, more organizations to get behind it. Met with the sheriff's office and went over getting up to this last quarter, and the good news, of course, as expected, they came in under budget. And I think there's, oh, let me go back. Thank you for listening to why I put forth the proclamation. We have proclamations from time to time, obviously, very different from policy, but the way we are set up, we can't talk to each other as school board members about things that are on the agenda. And there was no intent to sneak anything in. And there, this is, as I said, has been something I've been trying to do for a number of months, but there were a lot of assumptions made, and it shouldn't have been that way. Other than that, I'm sorry, I'm got a little bit of pneumonia, and so my voice is back to not working as well, so I appreciate your listening. But one thing I'd like to get on our agenda is that we do, as Ms. Hanson mentioned at our last workshop, I'd like to talk about the teachers and smoking breaks and what we can do to assist them, if that's even possible. And lastly, I'm looking forward to the few events, musical events, such that are coming up, and I think I've got seven graduations to go to and wish we could squeeze in more. But many schools have them on the same night, so it gets a little difficult. But thank you all.
Ms. Cole Holssen?
I just want to reiterate my appreciation for...
I just want to reiterate my appreciation for the way that our country honors prayer and as a board that we appreciate the power that it holds. And I hated missing with you guys at Morning Star, but Seemark Ranch had our own National Day of Prayer. We met at the flagpole and prayed with our students and our staff, and it was a really special time. I echo your concerns about what's happening with our funding or what could potentially happen with our funding. I appreciate the advocacy from parents, from students who are concerned about our programming and, and being adequately funded to offer the services that I know we all benefit from here in Clay County. And I'll just, on a personal note, this proclamation, I think, was important to recognize. Over our spring break, my family visited Washington DC, and we toured the Holocaust Museum. And it was probably the most impactful experience that I've ever had with my children. We learned a lot from it. It was hard to look at, but I think it's important that we recognize that. And I told my kids, they asked me when we left, Mom, why did you make us do that? Because it's hard, right? And my response to them was, I want you to know what hate does and where it leads and why we don't harbor it in our hearts towards anyone. So on a lighter note, I know May is jam-packed with so much. I think May really makes us earn our summer breaks. I know we're all looking forward to lots of celebrations for student achievements. My family's enjoyed visiting a lot of the championship games that are going on. Clay High is knocking it out of the park lately. Those girls' flag football are a force to be reckoned with, and Clay High baseball is on to another championship game shortly. So lots to celebrate, lots to look forward to, and I wish you all the best.
Thank you, Ms. Gilhousen. And I want to say that we, we here in Clay County are very special and unique, I think, especially with your elected officials. A majority of us were at Morning Star this morning. A lot of people have to work outside of their elected positions. Some of us have flexibility with our other jobs. But to have all of us together in a room praying for our kids, praying for our country, praying for our county, praying for what's going on in the world, the heinous things that are happening, really says a lot for your elected officials here in Clay. Whether you believe in a higher power or not, that's unity with your elected officials, and I think it's an amazing thing. And as far as, I know I addressed Clay Day. A lot of us go over there. A lot of people think it's just a big social event, but we actually do not only talk to our delegation, they call it Clay Day because the majority of Clay goes over there, but a lot of us spend our time talking to several other senators and house reps and anybody and everybody that we, that will hear us out and, and letting them know the individual impacts that we are going to see. Because when you give a different perspective, when you, you know, just line item something, sometimes you don't understand the trickle-down effect. So we just let them know. Our voices, I think, were heard, and, and that's all we can do. But like the other board members have touched on, we do have them in our phone, and we communicate. And we, I would say that we in, in Clay have a great communication with all of our elected officials, being able to express concerns and work things out. I, I do believe that. And last, lastly, May is busy. It is the end of the year. I have two little ones, so we're running around crazy. I've got four teachers that I get to take care of and spoil. I've got a baby going into kindergarten next year, so I'm going to be enjoying my last little summer with my last little one. And I want to say, it's so neat when we go to our, to these schools to see, you know, you, you sign off of things at board meetings, and you vote them in, and you vote them, vote for them to, to get funding here and there. And to actually go to a school and to see a track, the, the track field redone and the, and the track redone at all these schools and all the new things that we're doing really puts things in perspective. But I had the opportunity to go to The Little Mermaid at Fleming Island Elementary. I think it was last weekend, last Friday. And I took my little girls, and my littlest one is obsessed with princesses. So the whole time, her mouth's open watching it. But what was so impressive to me is, I guess I'm not used to elementary school productions that well put together and well done. Like truly, I was very impressed. I told the director and all the teacher, and that's put on by teachers. Like there, there, there's no designated like music teacher or drama coach or, or whatever. They all kind of just get together and, and put it together, and they did one heck of a job. And my littlest one turned to me and said, in the middle of it, Mommy, this is just great, and put her hands together. So it was really sweet. And at the end, she went up to Ariel, and I want to, I want to thank the student because she never left her character. She was Ariel to my little girl. So it was very sweet. It actually brought little tears to my eyes because of how excited my littlest one got. So thank you for that. Our arts program is doing great, and like I said, I was truly impressed. The singing, the, the dancing, the, the props, like all the things. But with that, Mr. Broski, did you need to say one more? Okay, with that, this meeting's adjourned.